Well, a lot, but it's really easy to find the one in the carpet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are everywhere you look.
You get to add to your list of I spy hollyhocks.
Is this a hollyhock?
It's an abstract, yes. There are elements of the hollyhock design in these windows.
So you have the real hollyhock and the abstract hollyhock.
Yep, the real flowers are planted everywhere, but in spite of the name, there's more to this house than just hollyhocks.
This is made of cast concrete blocks. It's an abstract design. Frank Lloyd Wright looked to nature for all his inspiration. You have water, you have fire, you have earth in the concrete, and you have light.
I really love architecture, so I wanted to kind of figure out like what was so special about it and like why there was like so much hype around it.
I'm a really big fan of Frank Lloyd Wright. I just really like his style because it's so simple and natural and really evokes the elements of the earth and nature.
I wanted you to take a look at the back of this chair.
It's a hollyhock.
It is.
And so, a Hollywood landmark has now been upgraded to one of the world's most important cultural and historic sites.
For more information and to schedule a tour, visit culturela.org and click on Hollyhock House UNESCO Designation. L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs manages the site. Councilmember Gil Sedia helps support a new Latino history book in L.A.'s libraries. A boost for MetroLink ridership and local high school students get free Wi-Fi, thanks in part to L.A. Council President Herb Wesson. All this in City View. L.A. City Councilmember Gil Sedia and the L.A. Public Library are working together to distribute a new book called "Power Shift: How Latinos in California Transformed Politics in America to Library Branches Throughout the City." The book details the legacy and accomplishments of 10 East L.A. Latino political leaders. MetroLink has hit a major milestone, hitting nearly 12 million boardings last year. The new record is an increase of 247,000 boardings from the prior year and eclipses the records set in 2008 and 2009 fiscal year. L.A. City Council President Herb Wesson has announced the launch of a citywide program to give free Wi-Fi hotspots to low-income high school students so they can do schoolwork. Council President Wesson is working with One Million Project Foundation and Los Angeles Unified School District on this project. Want to post something different on Instagram? Well, a new pop-up gallery is the first in the world dedicated to exotic fruit, and you can even sample some of these healthy foods while you're there. Gil Reyes shows us.
Get your camera ready. In the world of photo-friendly pop-up galleries, a new one called World of Fruit brings something new to the table.
As far as I know, it's the first and only fruit-themed immersive experience in the world. And we just opened a couple months ago. We're directly across from the legendary Pink's Hot Dogs. So we're a great location here, a lot of summertime fun here, get some great photos, taste some yummy treats, get a nice popsicle, it's just a good time here.
Founder Andrew Zo takes us on a tour.
So Andrew, this room is all banana slices, but they aren't your typical banana slices.
No, they're not. So, you know, our whole thing is food you've never seen or tasted before. You know, we don't want to do a yellow, traditional yellow banana. A lot of people have called these cow bananas, a bunch of different names. We just want to make things unique.
Here's a nice group photo taken from this room. Moving on.
A little bit more of a tranquil experience in this room compared to the others.
Right, definitely. So you can see this is our Holy Vines Room. We have fog going, we have, you know, birds chirping with tropical rainforest sounds. We see a beam of light coming down, and it kind of illuminates this garden of Eden almost with these enlarged berries.
World of Fruit also hosts private parties as well as film shoots. Celebrate with friends in the Infinity Grape Room or in the Pineapple Disco Derby. This space even has watermelon disco balls to get you in the party mood. Now on to the next room.
Andrew, this is called the Watermelon Room?
Right, this is one of our fan favorites, actually, just because there's so many photo ops. You know, two swings, you have a seesaw, and you get a wonderful waterfruit popsicle that you can only get here.
Thanks, Jordi. How many flavors do we have?
We actually have watermelon here, and then the bottom is actually a lemonade flavor. And everything's natural, gluten-free, it's only 60 calories as well. Everything in this room you can actually play with, so all the swings work as well. It really brings up the inner child in people, so even we've had some people, you know, like 70, 75 years old come onto the seesaw and just have a great time. This, to me, is the most exciting part of our experience. You know, a lot of Instagram museums out there, you can get the photos, but none of them have this. Every guest that comes in here gets a sample of each of these fruits. So we'll start here with the jackfruit. This is one of our fan favorites. It's a very sweet fruit, very tart. We have guava here, passion fruit, yellow dragon fruit. We have baby pineapples here, rambutan, as well as star fruit. You're not going to find these in your vans, you're not going to find these at Ralph's in your local grocery stores.
Come get a taste and snap some photos at World of Fruit at 716 North La Brea. For ticket info, log onto worldoffruit.co.
A portion of the proceeds benefits the L.A. Food Bank. The gallery runs through the end of October. It's an app that helps kids discover and explore the world around them. The goal is to get more kids outside playing and learning.
We are really happy to have all of you guys here today at L.A. State Historic Park for our official launch of Agents of Discovery.
Agents of Discovery is like Pokemon Go, but for education.
I need two objects with masks. I mean, yes, yeah, masks.
It's all about getting out and exploring. It's, you know, linking location to learning.
Read this challenge, and this is one of our missions.
Agents of Discovery allows students to learn more about parks.
I get to learn something, and I love nature, so it's even better.
The city of L.A. was one of the very first customers of Agents of Discovery, and they now have nine parks that are participating across the city. And there is about, in total, about 300 locations in the country.
So I have learned that there used to be a train station here.
And then how did they clean the area up afterwards? By planting corn to suck the toxins out of the ground. Just walking through here and doing the app, I think it expands essentially our knowledge of the area.
Learning something new, it can open up doors for you to have better perspectives of other places and other things and other people.
This is what the world needs. We don't need more entertainment. We need more families out happy together exploring.
Who doesn't love elephants? They were the hot topic recently during World Elephant Day at the L.A. Zoo. It was all part of an effort to increase awareness of the challenges that Asian elephants face and protect them from extinction.
This weekend, the L.A. Zoo is celebrating World Elephant Day with a lot of activities focused on Asian elephants. August is Asian Elephant Appreciation Month, and we're trying to shine a light on Asian elephants because they're highly endangered. Some of the challenges facing Asian elephants are illegal ivory trade, habitat destruction, and human-elephant conflict. As people take up more and more space, elephants have less space to live in, and that's causing a lot of challenges for them.
I think it's very informational, very educational, and eye-opening because you see how they're trying to mimic their natural environment here, and we're killing it out there, so it kind of sucks.
We have a campaign called Tons of Love. We're trying to get 40,000 social media posts that are tagged with the hashtag #tonsoflove to let people know there are only 40,000 left.
We, as a people, we should do something to save, you know, not only elephants, all the endangered, you know, animals.
Come down and tour our barns where you can learn more about our elephants and how we take care of them, what they eat, and participate in some fun activities that we've got for the kids. There's all kinds of fun stuff to do.
Each summer, the Department of Recreation and Parks offers a summer concert series in Pershing Square. Anita Bennett reports the events are a big hit with people who just happen to be downtown. The sounds of summer and of Rick Springfield filled Pershing Square at a free summer concert.
Fun, you know, our kind of music, the food, the day, just getting out of the office. Perfect.
As the crowd took in the music, South Bay cover band Radio Rebels belted out a string of 1980s hits.
This is our third year playing Pershing Square, so we were really excited to be asked back. The energy is so fun. I mean, we get an eclectic crowd here, people that work downtown L.A., people just maybe visiting here in the summer, tourists.
Those tourists and others in the crowd settled in for an afternoon of fun.
We're from Fort Lauderdale, Florida. So how'd you hear about this?
We were just walking by, and we heard the music, and I pulled my daughter in because I love this music. This is music from my good old days.
It is lunchtime, so for anyone looking to grab something to eat or drink, they got that covered too at the Pershing Square Farmer's Market. I'm having a tropical juicy juice. That's good.
The Summer Concert Series is presented by the Department of Recreation and Parks, and judging by the reactions, well, today's performance hit just the right notes. The Pershing Square lunchtime concerts are held each Wednesday afternoon throughout the month of August. Enjoy Sunday Market that's 100% vegan, come out for a Latina Fest that's all about empowerment, and book lovers explore the writings of great authors, poets, and artists at a Village Book Fair. All this and things to do. Vegan Sunday NoHo is the South Valley's free 100% vegan market featuring local food, apparel, and lifestyle vendors. At Vegan Sunday, you'll find an army of vendors serving up tacos, drinks, burgers, and more alongside cosmetics, candles, and then some. Join your NoHo neighbors for Vegan Sunday weekly from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 5300 Bachman Avenue. For more details, visit vegansundayevents.com. The Lamont Park Village Book Fair returns for its 13th edition. Book lovers, families, and fans of all ages are invited to join in on this unrivaled literary event. Come celebrate the writings of great authors, poets, and artists during this day-long festival. The 13th Annual Lamont Park Village Book Fair drops on Saturday, August 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Get more details at lamontparkbookfair.com. Experience an empowerment celebration. Latina Fest 2019 is an outdoor festival which brings together thousands of women eager to engage and network. You can shop, enjoy some wellness pampering, or sip wine at the Cocktail Garden. Then listen as inspirational talk Latina speakers share how to find the most powerful you. Latina Fest 2019: Mind, Body, and Soul makes its way to La Plaza de Cultura y Artes on Sunday, August 25th, beginning at noon. For more information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Ruth Smith, Wesson, ten members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. It's Wednesday, August 21st. What is the first order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Uh, Ofero moves, Smith seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezar moves, Bonin seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, items one through eight are items which public hearings have been held. There's a request to hold item one, sir.
Let's hold item one, and let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to items called special or public comment?
Okay, let's start with public comment. Mr. Mike Greenspan, Marco Juarez, Josephine Tang, please come forward. Please come forward. No, just come on, sir. Come on. Just identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Marco Juarez, and I like the record to reflect my share. This is my opinion. That is important. This is on record. And again, I'm here to request help to stop the bullying from this agency, Los Angeles Community Investment Department, and Fair Housing, to stop bullying the disabled tenants and low-income families, and especially social security recipients, helping to steal money. That's a federal crime. I've been filing many claims, and especially this management company, it's our properties. They know, they've been helping. What they do, that's illegal, stealing money. They're refusing to clean the building. They're refusing to fix the building. Many claims to Mr. Robert Gallardi, Chief Inspector, and Marcela de Charlie, Senior Investigator, and nobody's doing anything to help us. Who's gonna do anything, Mr. President? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juarez. Okay, next, and then we want, I think we have Sean Murphy and Corey Schmidt. Please identify yourself. You're next.
Good morning. I'm Josephine Tang with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. When it comes to California's most prominent problem, the bottom line is homeless, our homelessness crisis is our housing crisis. We don't lack space to live in, we lack affordable space to live in. So, an average LA resident needs to make forty-seven fifty-two per hour to afford the median monthly rent, which is over 3.5 times the minimum wage. An idealized measure entirely devoid of the reality of all of our people that live and work in LA. We must invest into making affordable housing within arm's reach so that people don't fall out of like all the conditions that they're trying to just survive in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah.
Corey Schmidt, Lauren Natoli. Yes.
Item one, I am for. General public comment. I wish you open up Van Nuys City Council in Van Nuys. It takes, it takes two hours to get downtown now. I can't, I don't think I can take this. I wish you reconsider opening video conferencing in Van Nuys. You shouldn't let people from the valley take a two-hour bus ride. Winnetka and Demontier and the West Valley needs to be fixed, needs to be fixed. Please open Van Nuys Council.
Okay, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. I'm Lauren Natoli from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. The harmful consequences of trickle-down housing policies such as astronomical rate of homelessness and incredibly high vulnerability for middle and working-class residents should be evidenced enough for us to shift to community-based solutions like rent control to help our residents directly. Those working to support our communities at the foundation are being erased as the vision for housing is shifting and leaving them out of view. Los Angeles is a rich city with an iconic identity because of its people. It's time we put them in their liveliness first, livelihood first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, followed by Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I am speaking to item number one in regards to the lighting districts that I said I didn't want to see again, and like I said to my word, I am here again to speak on them. So, I just...
Corey, you're gonna, let's give him his minute again. The comment on one has already been satisfied, so we can move into your general public comment. I want you to have your full minute. So, go ahead.
The lighting districts, they, a bunch of countries in the European Union, including Brussels and Germany, as well as Rome, even Rome doesn't want it in their city because they tend to have, it can be used to destroy crops. So, you know, if you can destroy the, if you get the technology in there, and then you destroy the crops, then that country is then dependent on you. So, it's a power move. I really think that that, you know, you guys need to know about that. And now, to get on to my other point, I need this on the public record in case anything happens, because I just want to let you know that I'm not afraid of death. And if anything happens to me, you need to quit your jobs, and you need to rise up. You guys call him God, but I call him the big guy. I think of him more like the homie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. That's your, your time. Okay, Mr. Herman.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, my niggers. As you see, public works...